Welcome, we'll open up our regular session November 4th, 2015. Please silence or shut off your cell phones and if everybody please sign in before they leave over here and would you join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So on our agenda, we have a couple additions. The additions are American Tower Lease Agreement and Crane Mountain LLC Tourist Lease Agreement. Is there any other corrections or deletions?
I have no additions.
Alright, with that, we're going to get right into our meeting. We have a 10 o'clock public comment. Anybody's welcome to make any public comment on anything other than what's on the agenda at this time, if anybody'd like to come forward. Welcome, go on in. No public comment at this time of anything other than what's on our agenda. We'll move along and do some of our other business until our timed item at 10:10. So our first other business item is the 2015-16 ODFW payment in lieu of taxes. This is a ratification. We had an update on yesterday from our assessor. This has already been signed by the Board of Commissioners to then get the taxation going as the tax time comes upon us. So with that said, unless there's any further explanation?
Well, for explanation for the folks here about this amount to the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, probably at Summer Lake, the wildlife area, when that came into effect, it was an affiliated pay taxes, in lieu, my payment in lieu of taxes, sorry. That's the application of it.
So I would entertain a motion?
I would entertain a motion to ratify the...
Certify of 2015...
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to ratify the certification under Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife taxes, payment in lieu of taxes. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And that has already been signed. Next item is Measure 57, IGA number 5169. We had an update from our Adult Corrections Director Jake yesterday. This is announced to $50,000 in the Dianian, $25,000 per year. This is for an MRT program, Moral Recognition Program. And so this money comes in and a lot of it gets used over to our mental health side. Need any other clarification or anything?
Only according to Jake Raver yesterday, it's been a very successful program.
Yep. And it's for two years from the beginning, as you said. I'll make a motion that we approve Measure 57 IGA as presented, the amount of $50,000.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the Measure 57 IGA as presented. Further discussion? Mr. Bailey, you review this?
Yes, it's fine.
Just to note that it's state funds, it's not county general funds.
Yes.
They give us the money to run the program.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair will tie, motion carries. Still have time, we'll move on to the next one. We have a request from the Town of Lakeview for funding requests for decorations. Mayor Wenzel was here yesterday and gave us this request. The town manager was also here. They would like to request $200 from the county in support of E Street decorations during Christmas time for garland and other things. Very positive discussion yesterday, so it's an action item for today. As I, for discussion before we make the motion or anything, probably the appropriate place we decided to do this would be out of our Economic Development Fund, which is state lottery dollars that come into the county. Would not be the taxation dollars, people would be the economic development dollars, would be my recommendation. With that said, I will let you speak, I would say the same thing.
Yeah, probably, Commissioner. I think this is a great thing and I know the town really looks nice during the holiday season, but with this request, as we've done on other requests, I would like us to consider making a similar contribution to the community of Christmas Valley as well as the city of Paisley. Both of those communities also do Christmas decorations and I don't think they've ever talked to probably ask us about it, so we consider that as part of it.
That's kind of been my comment also. Anything we do for local communities, we need to be considerate of the full county as it suggests.
I agree 100%. I believe all three of us would do and make the same statement, so I would entertain a motion, probably based around the states.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request from the Town of Lakeview in the amount of $200 as well as the communities of Christmas Valley and Paisley if they so choose to accept that.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? Maybe a little clarification, I think, for the money, obviously, maybe it goes to the, so the city of Paisley, Christmas Valley, we probably need to clarify if it goes to Park and Rec or if it goes to the Chamber, so that we make sure it goes to the appropriate area, so.
Yeah, I agree. Well, we can find out who kind of organizes it and ask them if they're in.
I'm always at a loss though for Fort Rock, Silver Lake, Plush, Haydale, and Pine Creek.
Yep. Well, I have to say, we do the same thing as they do town decorations.
Alright, so we'll stay with the motion and we will find appropriate, either the Chamber or the Park and Rec, which one's appropriate for the decorations for Christmas?
Providing a little beautification kind of town of our economic funds does add a sign of vitality to the community and that is a component of economics, inspiration and the general outlook of the community.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair will tie, motion carries. Please would you make sure that we notify those? I think it would be a surprise to two communities, take care of that. We still have a little bit of time. We'll move on to the College Advisory Board Member Recommendation. This is, well, hold on, don't hurry from that, strike that, we're going to jump on down to the Board of Property Tax Appeals Member Recommendation. I think that one's pretty fast and easy.
You're not being a little preemptive on that, fast and easy.
Yeah.
I've held this for nine years and I'd like to share it with either one of you.
I'm sure that you've been doing a very good job for nine years and you will train one of us within this next year, so we have a recommendation, please appoint a fallen people to the Board of Property Tax Appeals, which is Mr. Ken Kessler with nine years of experience. We'd like to keep our experience going. Chris Wade and Indiana Walls.
Mr. Chair, you suggested that it would take nine years, I mean, a full year to train you, or the other commissioner. Explain that, please.
Explain that, that we're much faster learners than somebody that takes nine years to learn.
So, I wasn't very productive for that year, so that's a good rationale for me to start to say.
With the investment of the county taxpayers' dollars of nine years into your expertise, we want to make full use of that for this next year.
I'll train you, if that's possible.
I think I'm going to have to make the motion. You make the motion to appoint Ken Kessler, Chris Wade, and Indiana Walls to the Board of Property Taxes.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further productive discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you for your time, Commissioner, and we do appreciate the number of years you have put on that. With that, that moves us along to our timed item for 10 o'clock. This is for discussion slash possible direction that we may or may not go with draft ordinances. So we have three draft, keep in mind these draft ordinances that were brought together for discussion today, which the legislature gave us an option to look at after the statewide vote of Measure 91. One thing I do need to clarify on the one ordinance, draft ordinance, and the matter of ordinance opting out of Measure 91 and referring to the matter to the general election, there's a Scrivener's error on that, there are two copies have been distributed. It needs to read on the third paragraph on the clear ad halfway through is unincorporated areas, not incorporated. So I wanted to make sure everybody knew that that Scrivener error was there and that's clarification. The incorporated areas have their own jurisdiction and can make their own decisions, which the Town of Lakeview has already made their decision. City of Paisley has not made a decision at this point, which is a decision if, they got until December 27th to make that decision. So with that, I would like for legal counsel to give an overview of the three draft ordinances in the process. We want to follow the process exactly the way it needs to be done, and where we're at in the process, and what we have options to do today.
So, just before that, for everybody's awareness, there's actually four possible decisions. One is not do anything and just permit the full scope of marijuana grow, retail, that is, the other is, as you may go through, is ordinance that describes one thing and the other ordinance describes another and another describes, so there's four options.
Thank you, that was the first thing I was going to...
It's Elaine.
Yeah.
Before that, a few words about the process itself, so everybody understands where we are in this ordinance passing process. Every ordinance that is considered by the county goes through the same process. And the first is discussion as to whether or not an ordinance should even be proposed, and that's where we are today. So while there are draft ordinances here, the discussion among the commissioners is whether or not to go forward on any of them. So this is the very first phase of considering whether or not an ordinance needs to be passed on the subject. After that, if the decision is reached to have an ordinance, or to, I'm sorry, to consider an ordinance, then we will read the ordinance that is going to be proposed and then there'll be additional publications. After that, there is at least a 13-day period before there is a second meeting at which the ordinance is brought before the public. You can have more than one meeting after this, but there has to be at least one more meeting and no sooner than 13 days. Then at that next moment, there will be discussion and consideration whether or not to enact the ordinance. So there are four different phases and we're just at the very first one, and that is, is there even going to be an ordinance? Put forward. The decision about whether or not to have an ordinance, it won't be made until the next meeting, which is actually going to be December 4th, because there's no meeting, there's a second meeting here in November. Everyone will be out of town, have the Association of Organized Counties Conference. So here we are at the very first stage, which will be to consider whether or not to need an ordinance. As Commissioner Kessler pointed out, there are four things, there are four directions that the board can go. The first is, as you mentioned, doing nothing. Deciding today that none of the proposed ordinances should be put forward into the process. If that is the course, if that's the decision made, then Lake County will go forward with, the best way to describe it is, all the counties to the west, the valley counties, who want, fairer want it to be available without restriction, other than the OLCC regulations. The second possibility that's in the ordinances that you have there is what was originally envisioned with House Bill 3400, which is opting out of the allowances under Measure 91. In other words, there would be no allowance in Lake County of retail sales, medical sales, processing, growing, all those things associated with the marijuana business. In other words, most of the counties who are to the east of the valley wanted that opt-out option, and that's what House Bill 3400 attempts to do. The other variation is opting out but allowing medical marijuana sales and referring that to voter approval. The fourth option is opting out and referring that to voter approval. So I'm going to explain the difference about what's going on. House Bill 3400 allows the commissioners themselves to pass an ordinance opting out of Measure 91. They have the power to do that, as with any ordinance, and not refer that to the general public for a vote. However, House Bill 3400 provides the board with the option of opting out and then referring that to a public vote to approve or disapprove of the ordinance. So we have two variations that do that. We have one option, which is the board will decide, pass an ordinance, and that's it. The advantage of doing that, if the board goes that direction, is if the board passes the ordinance and does not refer it to a public vote, then the board can come back and change that decision, just like it would any other ordinance. It would not need to be referred back to a public vote. So to be colloquial about it, it would be a quicker turn radius. If the board decided things had changed and some allowance should be made for marijuana processing, sales, grow, whatever, then the board could repeal the previous ordinance in the normal ordinance process without going back to a public vote. Now we get to the two options that go to a public vote. Number one is opting out of Measure 91 and putting that to a public vote next November. House Bill 3400 does not allow it to be decided anytime sooner, it must be sent to a public vote at the next general election, that would be November 2016. What this means is that if the board were to adopt, after this process, not today, after this process, adopted ordinance that opts out and refers to vote, public vote, then there would be an opt-out regime in Lake County, and then in November of 2016, the voters would decide, yes, we agree with the opt-out decision, or no, we are going to vote against that opting out, and Measure 91 would be the regime in Lake County. The fourth one is a little bit more complex, and that is the option of allowing medical sales but opting out of everything else and referring back to the voters. The reason this is complicated is because if that's the ordinance that goes through the process and is put forward, it will require an education to the public about exactly what happens if you vote against that ordinance. If you pass the ordinance, then, this is again in November 2016, then medical sales are allowed, everything else the county opts out of, that's if you pass the ordinance, the voters agree. If the voters vote against that ordinance, then Measure 91 controls, there is no opting out. So the complication of the medical sales is that it either has to be approved by the county and everything else is opted out, or if the county votes against it, it's Measure 91, and you're getting exactly the problem. People could decide, I don't even want medical sales, and vote against it, and in doing so, they would be voting for Measure 91. So that is the wrinkle with trying the medical sale, allowing medical sales, not doing that or anything else. Anything else you'd like me to cover?
I believe that's got most of it. The timeframes you covered, the timeframe, if we go forward with only draft ordinance today, 13 days after today, we have a hearing.
No sooner than 13 days.
No, no sooner than 13 days after today, and that's following the process.
That's correct.
We technically only have to have that one public hearing.
That's right. We would read, if we decided we're going to go with any ordinance, that we would read that ordinance in total today. Then have a second meeting, no sooner than 13 days.
And the process for us as the board today is to have the discussion about these three draft ordinances, and if we decided to use one of them, it would take a motion and a second and vote, and that would push that into the next round.
Correct.
Okay. Board, have any other questions or clarity on the process? Okay.
Thank you. Everything that Jim said, if it was spelled out in bullet forms, bullet media, people can see the diagram flow.
I could try it simply this way, the four options, do nothing, Measure 91 controls. Board opts out, end of the process as an ordinance. Board opts out and refers that decision to the public. Board decides to allow medical sales, opts out of everything else, and refers that to a public vote.
Okay, well, to kick this off, for the first part of the discussion between the Board of Commissioners, and there is quite a bit of public here today, so I believe it'd be prudent after we have the discussion to allow people have some, we'd say...
We had a few folks though who submitted either phone message or...
Correct. So I'm going to kick it off amongst us, and then we will take some public after the three of us have the discussion. I've reviewed these, been thinking about this quite a bit. I'm down to, and I'll just put it out there to start the discussion, I don't know where you two are. I'm already, I'm comfortable with draft ordinance that would refer it to the voters for their vote, opting out, and that's, I believe that that's the option that the state legislature gave us. I believe that's a good way to go myself. So just to start the discussion, that's where I'm at, which means that I can't dissuade or have other discussion from the board here and when we listen to public, but I would like to put it to the vote of the people for an opt-out. I believe the medical side of it confuses the public. If the public voted to not opt out, the medical is in, so it's not really necessary to put ordinance out there to allow medical, people will vote and say either in or out. That's where I'm at at this point, so I'll be quiet and let you guys talk.
Yeah, I'm in a similar spot at this point in time, but I definitely started out with the idea, and it was based upon the original vote. We all know marijuana is legal, and 62% of the folks in Lake County voted against legalization. And as you study the issue and you listen to people, you find out that not everybody that voted against it is now against some of the other aspects, any or all of the other aspects. And I've made this comment to some of you that are in the audience, others that weren't here, multiple times. I've been the commissioner for nine years, I never felt like the board couldn't make a decision independent of putting something out to a vote of the people such as this. But this is different, and I really don't know where everybody's at in the 4,100 registered voters out there. I know where they were at on legalization, as I said. I don't know where they're at on this, because I've had people that have came in and said, I voted against it, but I'm in favor of this. And we're representing the interests of nearly 8,000 folks, the 4,100 registered voters. And I really do believe for those on either side of this, if there's a support one way or the other, the only way we're going to know as a board is to opt out and put it to a vote of the people.
My thoughts on it, it would be best if it wasn't in front of us, but it is, and that's our charge. I'm not against, I'll put it this way, I've said it before, medical marijuana, I'm supportive of, for those individuals who want it. Do not, there's the pharmaceutical thing, but there's also some opposing counts on that. The medical aspect, I'm against a lot of views, but if we, we already have Recreation of 91, Measure 91 Recreation, so those who just wanted to do it for whatever reasons and had medical marijuana hurt. But those individuals who actually could benefit from medical marijuana, I'm supportive of that. On the retail part, I don't really want to see a lot of pot shops open up, but again, at the same time, I think business, free enterprise would govern that. On this processing, growing, like growing it and selling it to Portland, to me, that's a free enterprise. So I'm kind of stuck between three things. One is medical, marijuana, I support that. The other is free enterprise, Measure 91 was basically recreational, and now what we have in front of us is business aspect, I tend to be pro-business. The subject matter of that business, of course, is a conspiracy. The other aspect is, when the topic of putting it out to a vote, I first thought, yes, and then I kind of chewed on it over the weekend, said, well, we commissioners are charged with making decisions. But at the same time, over the months, it is, as Commissioner Shown said, a very, it's a topic of a lot of interest in the votes. So we need to hear that from the citizens, so I'm not opposed to put it on a vote. Again, I have to say, I am pro-medical. Now, if we put it to the vote, it's up to the citizens to educate themselves, such as reading 70 pages of OLCC rules. They've been ruled, and you have to recognize that on the medical part, that would be administered by the Oregon Health Authority, and they're strongly pursuing real tight constraints and everything. We don't know all the effects that are potent, see, and things of how, I just learned yesterday that OSU is putting in for medical, the federal government to do studies on marijuana, that's kind of a limited thing. But the aspect of putting that for a vote, it is a public concern, and if we do that, I encourage all folks to study, not just listen to the news, but to study the in-depth aspects of it. What we've been talking about, will be a one-year delay in any decisions from November, is not due November of next year, for people to get educated on that process, on what it is. Now, on the tax aspect, the tax aspect hasn't always been a big deal to me. What we have here in the county is probably very minimal, but a dollar is a dollar, is a dollar to the general fund. But if we vote and opt out, then that goes away. If we opt in on one aspect, like medical, and opt out on retail sales or processing, all the tax money goes away. That's just out there, like I said, it's not a big issue. I mean, we have no idea what it would be to the county of Lake, to the state of Oregon, they've got their projections, but most of that sales would be on the west side of the Cascades, so we don't know what that tax amount would be for us. There's another thought I have, and it's been out one year.
If you don't mind, Commissioner, I'll jump in. You made me think of something. Mr. Bailey, could you help us out a little bit with the timeline? Because you know, when this first came out, everyone, with the general election 2016, it's like people were saying, well, we can't do anything if you opt out and put it to a vote. But there's some timelines in there, there's a variety of timelines in there that would be good to mention, that even if we said, yeah, go forth and do whatever, people... be good to mention, that even if we said, yeah, go forth and do whatever, people can't do for some time in some of these different things.
Yes, it's a complication resulting from the poorly thought-out wording of House Bill thirty-four hundred. The first one is the most obvious, which is you have to make a decision by December twenty-seventh, and one of those decisions might be that there's no final decision until November twenty-sixteen. That's not normally the way people enact ordinances or laws. The other option to go to the other extreme is if no action is taken, then in January, the OLCC rules will take effect. The current ability of medical dispensaries to sell recreational marijuana will go away, and then individuals who want to make retail sales will have to, well, they're currently compliant with licenses already, but they must apply for licenses to OLCC, pay the licensing fee, and comply with those rules as well as inspection by OLCC. That will continue through twenty-sixteen, but OLCC projects that it's not likely that there will be any retail sales outlets until the second half of twenty-sixteen, which means if that is precise, then you would have two to three months of seeing what retail sales look like before the public would vote on whether or not to continue to allow them. Now, that would not be an option here, because you're either going to opt-out, and then that's it, or you're not going to opt-out, and you can't come back and change that with a later vote. But you could, if you opted out now, watch what occurs in other counties, and then the public can make a decision based on what that experience is elsewhere.
On that aspect of experience, there is a lot of unknown, so waiting will give us some time. If you go with what State of Washington says, it's going to make a lot of impact. I mean, you've got the criminalization aspect now that people are accustomed to. If you opt-in, what I'm told by many, people even unofficially by the state, but I think also the OLCC person who was here visiting, says it's not going to make a big difference if we permit it. It's not going to be a big difference from what we see out there today. You're always going to have a segment of the population using it, whether it's outlawed or permitted. So that's a point of interest of mine also. But the one thing I'm putting into the vote is if County of Lakeview opt-in, then those, it'd be a southern island of permissible. If Paisley opts in, it'd be another little island of permissible. If the county opt-out, then there's a dischuck between Fort Rock, Christmas Valley, Silverlake, Summer Lake, and the South Park. That bothers me. If we put it to a vote, I'd like to have it on a precinct basis, but I don't know if that's possible.
I don't think that's possible. It's a countywide vote. There's no provision for separating it out that way. That's another aspect.
Is there a provision against it?
No, but it's another example of how House Bill thirty-four hundred wasn't thought through, because the assumption was that the counties, the eastern counties would simply vote opt-out, probably not refer it to a general vote, but just opt-out by Board action. And we're seeing variations in that, and that was probably not really anticipated.
The last charge of the state counties, there was a hefty number of refer to a vote. And that was pretty well distributed between western Oregon and eastern Oregon. That kind of surprised me. I think a lot of the counties are kind of waiting. Like I said, there's a lot going on with Oregon Health Authority trying to get things pinned down, and also a lot of stuff going on with OLCC trying to get it pinned down. And I think some of those counties that put it out to a vote is kind of waiting to see happen here.
Yeah, there's, as we sat here, I'm sitting here thinking and everything, and this is one of the unique times that we've given the option to put out to the vote of the people. Another thing is this is the first time that legislators stood up and said, okay, eastern Oregon, you don't have to eat what western Oregon told you. You get an option for the voters of eastern Oregon to vote on this. And there's some glitches within the House Bill thirty-four hundred that they never thought about, but we've been given the hand, give the option to not just go with all western Oregon, that the voters of our community get a voice this time. So that has quite a bit to drive with me. We, as you guys have probably heard me many times, I think, and this is my vote, we need one Oregon. It should be a battle east and west side. We have to complement each other. But on this thing, or this vote, it is given us an option, so that has a little bit to do with, or I want to go to the vote of the people. Many things we deal with as a Board, and we are tasked, if we're elected, to make those hard decisions. With this one, though, we were given an option, and that option by our legislature, so I'd like to follow that option this year.
I have a question for you, Jim. Obviously, we can't go on a vote of precincts. One, I stated, I am pro-medical, however that pans out. The other is a distribution of a very large county and different that first. If we went with that opt-out, is it possible for the county to be selective on geographical areas to opt-in at a certain time during another ordinance? I'm testing your opposing on the law.
Yes, you could do that if you opted out as a, well, to have, if you opted out as the Board, then the Board could amend its ordinance later to allow certain activities. If you opted out and referred it to a vote of the people, then you have to go back to that same process to put it to a vote. So, but that's a very good introduction to saying that what you do today, what's done in November, is not the case for all time. The only thing that can't be changed is if you do nothing, then you cannot come back later and regulate it in any way.
Lord?
Well, I'm sorry, you can regulate it in terms of time and place, those sort of regulations, but you could not ban it completely.
Are you guys comfortable to take public testimony at this time? We have more discussion. So we'll allow people to come up and speak. Would you please state your name, come up?
Go ahead and get the monsta that phoned in off the table.
Okay, I believe, I believe all three of us probably got a phone call from Mr. Schultz, Mike Schultz. He voiced an opinion that he would like for us to put it to the vote of the people. After I phoned him back, I don't know if either one of you phoned him back. He's against it. At first, he's talking about opt-out, and then he said, refer it to the vote of the people. We do have, and the person's here, we do have a email from Teresa Decker, I think she will speak for herself today. We have two others, unless I'm mistaken. Denise, so I don't watch that.
Bill Berry phoned, and he asked that you opt-out completely, and Mary Anderson phoned and asked as well to opt-out completely.
Did you guys have any other questions?
Well, I've heard from Greg Larson, the owner of Pacific Pine, wasn't able to be here today, and he supports opting out, as well as on numerous occasions in a week, but I suppose we don't need to go down that road, but a recent email from Mike Getty stating the very same thing.
Good catch. I forgot Mr. Getty just. So with that, I don't believe we've missed any correspondence that we have received at Commissioners, so please, whoever would like to come up. We'll try to keep it in the three-minute timeframe for your testimony. Anybody wants to pick up? Yes, sir.
Can I stand here?
You can stand or sit either way.
Please sit. There we go. A big fancy room you got here.
Yeah, that's nice.
I'm James Sutherland, I live in Northlake County. I want to fill in just one little gap, because with recreational being passed in a state, one thing has changed that is dramatically impacting the people that I've been able to serve. Up until now, the state has been able to make enough money that they've allowed card stacking. That's where they allow more than eight cards at one residence. So I've had eighteen cards at my house. Recently, I've informed ten of those people that because they were not registered at my house before January first, they are not grandfathered in, and I can no longer grow for those people. That leaves ten new people that can't get their medicine, when I have been listening to you, Brad, and all of you gentlemen, you mentioned that you haven't heard from the medical marijuana patients in this county, that they're having a hard time finding medicine. So this is biased on my little poll here, it isn't a poll, it's the people that I have been growing for, that I've now had to inform most of these people that I can no longer grow for you because of these new state laws. That doesn't kick in till January or March, but because I'm not going to be able to continue growing for those people, I can't build a facility to serve them for just three months or six months and then stop. So the question was residents in Northlake County. Do you have easy access to cannabis or medicine of choice? Your local elected officials are curious to hear your feedback. I am a medical marijuana patient living in Northlake County. No, I do not have easy access to quality medicine in Northlake County. Please allow medical marijuana dispensaries to exist in Northlake County. There's six names that I got on here of friends of mine that live in Northlake County. I started doing this yesterday at four o'clock. I could fill all seventeen of the positions that I have on here with people that are no longer, because they had a grower, that they, that won't be able to continue because the new laws are kicking in. There's going to be a lot of people that were underneath co-ops, where they had dozens and dozens and dozens of people at one residence. They're all being dropped. They're all not going to have access to medicine anymore. I wish there wasn't a quandary in this laws, but we voted in medical in, I think, ninety-six. We're going into twenty-sixteen, and residents in this county still don't have access to quality medicine. They, the last thing is, in the past, we've tolerated gray market, where me as a grower distribute to other patients on a donation basis. There is no gray area anymore. There's black and there's white. The people are going to be finding their medicine through the black market. That's the fact. The hundred-mile drive one way, or sixty-six miles till the pine or to Bend, isn't something that the cancer patients that I serve, the autistic people that I serve, the PTSD people that I serve, they can't get, they've had me, and they no longer have medicine available anymore for a reasonable price, or even not through the black market. So who don't hand this to?
You submit it to the DUC.
Great.
It'll be part of the record.
Well, I, in closing, I, what a pickle that we're in, and I just ask for your hearts to stay open and keep wading your way through, because I know over the course of my life, my opinions change over things when I hear pieces of the puzzle put together. Thank you so much for everything you do, gentlemen.
Thanks, Jim. Anybody else?
Teresa Decker, welcome. My name is Teresa Decker, and I did send a letter, and thank you for the education here, Mr. Bailey, that was very informative. I'm a little confused on that last, that last option. But I would like to encourage you to opt-out. If I understand correctly, if you opt-out and put it to the voters, the decision cannot be changed without putting it back to the voters? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
If you opt-out without going to the voters, in another month or two, you could get together and change your minds. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So I'm thinking that probably what I'd like to see is an opt-out and refer it to the voters, so that any decision on this matter would be put to the vote in the future. I'm not, I'm not in favor of the large pot plant coming to Lakeview. I don't think that that is the kind of business that we need in Lake County. We've got options that are coming to Lake County. We've got Red Rock Biofuels, and we've got Quartz Mountain Gold. Again, as I've said before, there are a lot of job openings in this town. We cannot find people to fill the job openings that we have now, which means people will come into town. I'm a little concerned about some of the people that a pot plant might bring into town. Those people come in, they might not be able to pass a background or a drug test for any other type of employer in the town. Should they lose their job at the pot plant, what are we going to do with them? They're going to be on unemployment and left up to the taxpayers to support. So I think we need to think about the ambition of the people and the ability for them to contribute and to work when they do come to town. A couple things, the OLCC has got temporary rules out there. We have to remember federal rules prevail. The feds are not looking the other way. In two thousand and fourteen, the DEA arrested six thousand three hundred and ten people, seized twenty-seven thousand, excuse me, twenty-seven million dollars worth of product. They destroyed sixteen thousand pot plants in Oregon at the cost of a million dollars. So the DEA is active in, in our state. The OLCC specifies you need to have a two-year residency to open a retail program, or such as the greenhouse. So with them coming in, the forty-second group coming in from California, I'm not quite sure how they're going to meet that. Has anybody looked into that?
No.
I'm aware of the two years, that's true.
I, I don't know, truthfully, I don't know how they're going to meet that. The tax revenue is very attractive when you think about it, but there, there's a huge variation. The OLCC says it'll be about ten, ten point seven million dollars in the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and seventeen biennium. That's five point three five million a year. Forty percent of that's going to go to schools. I think, wow, that sounds like a lot of money, when you consider that there are, what, five, five hundred thousand, five hundred and seventy-one thousand students? It's three dollars and seventy-five cents per student, is what that forty thousand. Even if we get twice as much revenue as what the OLCC is predicting, we're talking seven dollars a student.
It's actually less than that because the distribution is based on the profits from that fund. So it would go into the fund, but then schools are distributed off the profits.
Thank you. So it's, it, as I think Ken said, the tax revenue's there, but it's really not as much as it sounds like when you start looking at it. So I'd like you, for you to consider that. And remember, the black market is not going to go away. They'll all be, the red tape drives the price up. The black market is still going to be there, because people can't afford to get it legally with all the, the red tape that they have to go through. Of course, banks can't handle the funds. How, how is that money going to be handled when it's all cash business? You could, we're going to have a myriad of issues and crimes when people get paid in cash, they take it home to their home. Legally, they shouldn't take it to the bank and deposit their payroll because it's federally illegal drug trafficking money. So how are we going to deal with this all cash business? I, I don't know the answer to this, but hopefully you do, or you can, you can think about it. So I, I think that concludes what I'd like to say today. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and I would urge you to opt-out, and I would urge the citizens to opt-out, so that we deal with it once and we're done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just going to make a comment, Teresa, because this has came up on the, the comment about the south end of the county versus the north, and so on and so forth. And we have a representative, I don't know if he's wearing that hat today from the town of Lakeview, but the town, we have no jurisdiction over the town. Within the urban growth boundary, I don't know where all the lands are within this town limits, but within the urban growth boundary, the opportunity for the business to pursue an annexation and go ahead and go under the umbrella, the town's rules on this are going to be removed from anything we do. So, you know, I just want to get out there the fact that the county- that the county is not controlling the town's decisions on this. And then you move up to the city of Payside where I live, the same thing is present. If they decide not to opt out or do anything and just let it roll, the county won't have any jurisdiction over that, any of our decisions.
So does the county currently have jurisdiction over the at-leaf property where the Forty-Second Group is looking to put their plant?
Jeff?
Yes. At this time, it's outside of town limits.
But in the urban growth boundary.
Which could be annexed and then we would not have control.
So thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm Gerald Stewart and I appreciate the opportunity to address the commissioner's tough decision. But it just seems so ironic that you're trying to acknowledge or let happen something that your own handbook would not permit somebody to do. It is just hard for me to wrap my mind around the whole aspect of it. Why would you permit and acknowledge something that the federal government says is illegal? The whole thing is, is hard for me to get a grasp of. So I would just start with that. As far as the business aspect, and I'd address this to Commissioner Kestner, if you look at what other states have done, a huge part of the business aspect has to go to offset what they're permitting. And that would be to mental health, to programs to help get this out. My problem with it is, in order for this to flourish, what, whoever they are, want to accomplish is the addiction. And once that addiction is in place for these people, and who knows who's that going to be? Then the big money starts to roll in because these people will sell their grandmother in order to satisfy these addictions. So therefore, I think it's not good socially, economically, or morally for our county. Thank you.
Good morning, Teresa Whitman. And I know this is just my opinion, but I feel strongly about children. And I think the bottom line for me is the less amount of options for children to, for children to choose, the less they will choose. So if we can keep as much marijuana out of this county as it beats fewer kids being able to have that option. They will always be there and I, and I know I can give the testimony of being in the high school and hearing a student say, "I just don't want to get it from my dad, he has a medical marijuana card." And that's one child who's willing to say it to another. And so I just, I just want to state that the fewer options they have to get bad things in their hands, we might be able to help kids make better choices. And I don't know what those choices are, but I would say let's, let's not put anything out there for kids to get a hold of. And so I, I, my statement would be opt out and put it up to the voters. My hope is that the majority of the county folks find a way that would be best for the children.
Any other testimony this time?
Hi, I'm Donna Luca and I wear several hats and it seems like it's pretty emotional for me because I think it's really important. And I'm used to speaking in front of people, but God, this is probably not me. And so I'm pastor at Lakeview Ministries. I'm also a member of the Ministerial Association and I work at the hospital. And in all of those places, I would ask that you all. I, I do drug screens at the hospital. I talked to a gentleman yesterday who I was doing a drug screen on and he said, you know, he said he just talked to my friend who, who has a business here and he said he had ten applicants for jobs, seven, seven of them could not pass. Okay? That's when it's not legal. And so, so it's, it's like, oh my gosh. You know, the mental health issue is huge. This spiritual health issue is huge. My husband does lots of outreach. He goes to the jail. He spent a huge amount of time up in prison, five, six, seven years there volunteering. And most of those are in there because they were on substances and it's a new story. That, I mean, that's the truth. And most of them started with marijuana. So, you know, that's a big deal to me. We, we talked about it at the Ministerial Association. All of us that were there were in agreement that opting out was a really good plan and we would encourage that. We would really consider that. You know, as a pastor, we're now doing a recovery group at the gathering place and there's a lot of addiction out there. It's just really hard for people to get well. I had a son who, when he was in high school, is doing great now, but was very addicted to marijuana. And I know people that say that, that tell you marijuana is not addictive. Marijuana is extremely socially addictive, extremely. It's very hard to get boys addicted. And he did because he has God in his heart and because he has a son. He said, "I want this for my son." And so I just hope we really encourage you guys to make a stand. And I'm very sorry that the town did not. Now, I'm going to, I'm going to listen.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm Buck Uber and I, for one, totally against marijuana. I choose that the county should opt out of that situation. I'm also totally against the formation of a facility here outside of town which would be an ISO, like you see outside of Altarus. Not only that, but there's no getting around what the effects are going to be on the public of that facility, the smell of marijuana, what's going to happen to the groundwater that they're going to be pumping out out of the system here, and where the wastewater goes and what effect that's going to have on people's wells and so forth that are in the area. There's no concern apparently for what effect it's going to have on people's property taxes in that area as far as the value of their property going down because of that facility. So I, I'm for opting out. I can emphasize that the folks who have to use marijuana for whatever reason, for medical purposes, I don't think that is the right thing for our county.
Thanks, Mike.
My name is Mary Stewart and I'm hoping not to be emotional, but I am here to tell you that we're against it. I don't feel like we need to put anything else out there for people to get addicted on. I think it's very harmful, the consequences of it, it's very sudden. And I'd like, what Brad had to say about us being able to have an option on this side of the issue and that maybe it's time to take our option and say, hey, we can be different than the rest of them. Just feel like it's very, I guess the, the money part of it or the taxes and the income for business, I don't think she can before humanize. I just think we need to think of people before we think of them. And that's really important to me too. So I'm just here to tell you that's how I feel and what we want down to something that's better for our lives, is how I see it. All right, thank you.
My name is Sasha Curtis and I'm a resident to Lake County. I lived in California my whole life and I have six children. And I had a 215 card since 2000, from 2006 to 2013. And I have used cannabis in, in my past for thirty-three and a half years. I grew in my home. I'm very much aware of the things that are involved with doing it illegally and illegally. That being said, I would strongly encourage you to opt out. It, I, it is not a good idea. I do not use anymore as a direct result of the health effects that it had on me. I used to be on the other side of the fence and used to sit at these board meetings and I was pro marijuana. I'm completely against it now. In my 215 card that I had in California, I had the maximum amount that was allowed to a dying patient. I had emphysema, fibromyalgia, gastrointestinal disease, IBS, rheumatoid arthritis, diabetes. I took over twenty-eight different medications and used the cannabis as well for pain. The results of that, it caused more damage. I had mold in my house. This was, it started when I was growing illegally and then it progressed in more than one home because of the water damage that is done to the homes, which pretty much is a permanent thing in, in a resident, whether you, you know, you're renting or you own your own place. That pretty much, the whole thing has to be reconstructed to get rid of it. Out of my six children, I have two children that are minors. One is fifteen and one is six. My youngest daughter has a disability that could very well have been caused from chemicals that were in my home or the use that I, I was allowed to use during my pregnancy because of the severe medical conditions that I had. Four of my children are adults now and they started using recreational as a result of me having it in my home. If they didn't get it from me, they were able to get it from other people who had a legal grow in their home. And out of everyone that I've known over the last thirty-three years who had a legal card, I could probably name two or three that actually needed it. It's extremely easy to walk into a doctor's office that gives out the medical cards and say you have a knee injury or rheumatoid arthritis, without showing any proof at all of your medical condition, give somebody eighty dollars to a hundred dollars and get a medical card. I have filed with SIC so, you know, there are some people who actually need it and I'm not opposed to them using it, but there are ways for people who are extremely sick and ill to get it without growing it in their own homes or having a personal grower for them. It brought a lot of illegal activity to Moatt County and Altarus where I live and I was a part of that in a. My heart is to be a productive member of society now and to make a difference and to speak up for what I used to do, to change the world and to make people aware of the serious damages that can be caused to children. And I'm advocating for my children right now. The four children that I mentioned that are grown up, that did start using at a very young age, are still using. One of them has a job. Very, very smart, brilliant children, could have gone to college. They're choosing to sit around and smoke. They're opting out to possibly go on SSI or looking for an out to, to continue on welfare. And almost every single person I knew that had a 215 card did that. They made their living off of growing or illegal activity and, which led to more illegal activity. And so I, I would strongly suggest you to opt out completely and not put it up to the voters to vote on this.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? James, I know you have something to say.
The public gets shocked before it gets out. My name is James O'Arts and I've been in Lake County for over thirty years. I love the people here and I do not smoke marijuana. I never smoked marijuana. I never took dope. That is the end of it, the people's responsibility not to do it. Now, the Oregon legalize, well, I didn't think they would, but now they legalize. What's people here going to do, go out of town and get? Now, the children, that is the mother in front of responsibility. I got three children and they're all doing good. Because I don't know how the good father did lucky. But for the, you know, people that work for the marijuana holders, if they put it in here, by my understanding, they have to all be drug tested. So if they lose their job, they're not dope at the beginning with. Now, alcohol is the same way as marijuana was. They don't weigh where and look at the people that make the money on it. The Kennedy, all them people. So is the same way marijuana is. You buy it illegal, people are going to tell, people are going to try because you're legal and they want to break the law. So if it's legalizing, that ought to do with a lot of people in jail, prison. So I don't know. That is up to the county to decide, but the voter of Oregon has legalizing. So we, we're going to work against the voter of Oregon because all the people in Lake County had to do it to go out of the county to get.
James, can I jump in just for verification? It's legal. We're not discussing that. We're not making a decision on the legality of it. It's legal in Oregon. And it's legal for those who choose to grow, I think, up to four plants in their own possession. So that's not an issue that we're dealing with. That ship has sailed.
Well, now, the lady here, she was saying that she was going marijuana, how is legal? Well, if you don't know how to grow this stuff and you put it where it don't supposed to be, it's going to cause you trouble. The greenhouses that grow it, they know what they're doing. I hope they do. So to outlaw the greenhouse, then you're going to put it back into the basement, the house, the, and then people, you know, that stuff ought to be in a greenhouse over with a chain link fence around it where people can't get to it. So I don't know what you want to do, but my opinion is that, well, they do not allow alcohol. It's up to the mother and father to take care of the children. Okay?
Anybody else? Okay, moving forward, a few comments, maybe you can ask some questions. Very interesting testimony today. Some of the pull very much at my heartstrings. Appreciate everybody that stepped up and spoke today. Gerald Stewart, you made the point that I have sort of thought about. Jerome Stewart, you made the point that I have sort of thought about it a little bit and hadn't been all the way with the thought. We have a tolerance clause for county employment of any kind of drugs, alcohol and everything. Very good point for bringing that forward.
Lake District Hospital also has the same thing.
And I believe probably almost every business does have that.
Correct.
And so your point of is, why would we allow something that our own policies disallow? Appreciate that point very much. Is it Sasha or Natasha?
Sasha.
Sasha, your story is very moving. I'm very pleased that somebody stepped forward that's been on both sides of it. Because of those of us that haven't, we don't know the true stories. Yours is from your heart, it's what's real. It's what you know and you talked very, very much about. Matter of fact, it's the way it is and with passion. Thank you for that. Appreciate that very much. Jim, when you spoke about on the medical side. I'm not an expert on the medical side by no means. I do know that there's people out there where there actually makes them feel better or it's state of mind that it does help them. And I do have compassion for some of those people that's there. We're sat here, as you said, we have to weigh, leave in and out. It's very tough decisions. So I just trying to make the point is, I'm listening, I'm sure the other commissioners will say the same. We're listening to all sides of it. It's not an easy position to be sat here as a board of commissioners. But today's testimony probably was some of the best testimony I've heard of actual things coming forward. And I just wanted to personally say thank you for everybody that took the time and came up there before we make our decision on what we're going to do. That's just sort of my overview on how it impacted me today.
Yeah, I would just be reiterating, Commissioner, just exactly what you said. This has been a very enlightening and valuable day for me. I appreciate it very much, Holly.
I appreciate it also. And Teresa, I have the same heartfelt for the little kids also. I'm kind of stuck in that the state has legalized recreation and it's out there. And what James says, for his parents, always going to be the population segment that uses it for general recreation. I don't have a problem with that. Others influencing kids, things like that. That touches me. But it's legalized anyways, so I'm not sure whether we have a medical dispensary or anything else. If they don't really change that segment or population, I'm stuck at that. As far as the, there's one thing on the cash flow and liability of taking money home. The press can't put it in the bank. That might be a little more conducive to burglary and so forth. I acknowledge that. I think sometime down the road, the federal government will probably change the policy. But that could be two years, it could be fifteen years. Where we at as far as, we're going to have out there for a one-year vote or something. We can always do something, change it. On the medical aspect, as I said, I'm very supportive of that. On the current aspect, there's a lot of views on it and they're going down, get it. But if we had a commission of medical, then those who is using it and grow it themselves, I mean, it's not going to make big use between who uses it. That could be one avenue to go using. So I'm still on that aspect. On the free enterprise aspect, I am strong. We have a law that says it's recreational use and it's going to be out there. And then what we're discussing now is, do we regulate the business? If we don't regulate it, we probably regulate it self-sufficient. I'm still at a loss of how it's going to, if we went with opt-in in and we had business whatever, is it really going to change the persons who give their kids? And again, back to the kids, it's when the kids start using it at a very young age, that's where the damage is and that's where the invasion starts. And it's out there already. How are we going to make a difference if we opt in, opt out? I'm at a loss. Teresa?
And my only opinion is, Mr. Castner, is the less amount we have in this county, the less that the kids can get their hands on. And so I'd say keep as much out of here as we can.
I'd agree with her.
Yeah, my thoughts on that is since it's legalized, it's going to be flux out there. We were selling it from house to house anyway, but I agree.
The more liquor stores we have, the more options kids have to sneak in and get what they can. And so I just say we limit it as much as we can. I understand the law, we can't change that. But I just say keep as much out as we can.
I guess the best way to say it is if the community supports and accepts marijuana, that sets the tone for the whole community from our youth all the way through, so.
Sends a message.
That's the way that I would answer that. Not to debate it one way or another, but those of us, older people within our community, set the example for the youth.
And we have to speak up for them, even though they're young, they're still making those decisions. They don't always see the long term, so that's all we can say is, we're trying to do the best we can for the kids.
Talking about the kids, I've raised three natural born and one that we raised. And they all turned out very well. I guarantee you, there's rebellion years. And in those rebellion years, which is just sort of growing up, if they have opportunities, sometimes they will go those places and everything. So I do believe in the parenting. I believe I've done an exceptional job, had an exceptional kids. But kids will rebel, there's peer pressure, there's other things. So there's that side of that argument too. And probably varying from our part. I would like to...
Well, I'll just have a check on that. The setting the tone is a well-known, noted statement.
Yeah. I believe we may have some other questions, but I believe we do need to take a five, ten-minute break before we hit the next stage. So unless the board is opposed to that, I'd like to come back with about thirteen-minute break and come back to the session at eleven-thirty. And everybody, please stay.
It is twenty-three minutes to twelve, we're back in this session. We were working on to make sure that the draft ordinances were correct. With that, the decision of the board at this point is to do nothing, which allows everything to just go forward. Take in consideration one of the three draft ordinances that we have. Our testimony, for today's testimony anyways, weighed very heavy as split a little bit between totally opt-in-out. We've heard about total opt-out, stopped-out, and then more so what I believe I heard was more people aimed towards opting out to the vote of the people. As I stated earlier, myself, my position is, is I'd like to refer it to the voters on the opt-out in November. So I'm not going to make that motion this time. I'm going to give both you guys an opportunity to speak, or if you have questions of the audience. I asked my question during break to Jim that I had.
I have a question, Jim. On the opt-out, medical marijuana, does that still go to the vote?
I thought you were talking about the other Jim. Repeat that question, please.
Why are you eating so many cookies right now?
For the green shirt.
Not excessive sugar. And that's a major health issue in the United States, that piece, because of the sugar.
Are you feeling well, Jim?
Feeling great.
Question on the opt-out, medical marijuana. Did I hear that that would go to a vote?
That is the option with this ordinance as drafted, yes.
So actually, we would have two to the vote and one that doesn't go to them.
Right, we have opt-out completely as a result of just board decision. And then we have two opting out, one opt-out completely, and refer one opt-out except for marijuana and refer two vote. You mentioned earlier, there really is any number of options because you could, if you went with the avenue of opt-out by board decision, you could come back in January and consider amendments to that ordinance that would allow medical sales or growing or whatever you wanted to. You could come back and revisit that as a board decision.
With or without vote?
With a board vote.
Yeah.
But if you went the other way and opted out and referred it to the electorate, then you could not revisit that until the results were known in November.
And then you change or it will take another one?
If, yes, if your proposed ordinance was approved, then you could come back with an amendment that would have to be voted on by the general public. If they voted against your proposed ordinance, then Mr. 91 would control and you would not come back to revisit the issue. As usual, the answers don't seem to provide much clarity. It's a complicated issue. It's hard to articulate.
So, Mr. Bailey, same question somewhat. We talked about this before. You've described it, but just for clarification, if we opt-out under Measure 91, except for permitting medical marijuana sales, and we further refer it to a vote of the people, what we opted out on, is it or is it not true that regardless of the outcome of the voting in November of 2016, medical marijuana sales would not be effective, they would continue on, because the folks would not be voting on that?
That's correct. You would either have a situation of only medical marijuana sales, or you would have medical marijuana sales and everything else.
Side of each adult? Well, one other question. I know we're talking about what ordinance, if any, we're going to move forward to a hearing process. But it has to be, if we move anything, it has to be only one ordinance to consider for a hearing?
That's correct. The, right, you can't, these ordinances conflict. You would create conflicting legal regimes if you pass both of them to ordinances, so you can't do that.
Well, not pass, but to move forward to the hearing process for consideration of passing.
Oh, no, you could do that. You could, you could still put forward both, or any number of ordinances just to go forward until the next meeting. But then you could, you could only pick one of them.
Right.
Yeah, so you could do that. You could, through a motion and a majority vote, then you could say, oh, let's start the process for both ordinances or three ordinances. But by the end of that process, you could only decide one, yeah.
So, we have a hearing on two?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah. Or three.
I believe that would add to the confusion myself.
So with that said...
But it allows options.
It does allow options, and so I'm going to make a motion to accept the draft ordinance and push it forward to the hearing process by the timelines in the matter of an ordinance opting out of Measure 91 and referring the matter to the general election.
I will second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion?
I'm still very supportive of the medical thing, so you might catch my thoughts.
I guess. Any clarification on what that last part was?
I'm leaning toward opting out, permitting and permitting marijuana. But the motion on the table, yes.
The motion on the table is, just have a little bit of discussion that way. I had some discussion with, I apologize, Mr. Southern, Jim.
There's confusion.
No, brother. OLCC rules and I believe they're coming down upon the medical side, and they're going to be what the rules are.
Not on the medical, not on the medical, that's worrying.
Oh, OHA. Yes, I stand corrected. I, I'm a little bit confused on how hard it is for people that need the medical site of it to get it. Whenever it's legal to have four plants in a household, anybody 21 years or older, there's a lot of people out there growing. I don't have a full pulse on the need in Lake County to have the medical dispensaries, because there is quite a few people that do grow, as Jim told me, up to eight, it's been knocked down to eight that they can grow for people in medical use. So, Mr. Kessler, I'm talking around it just because of, I do believe that there's people out there that need the medical site of it. I sort of believe that there's a lot of options for them to acquire that legally right now. So, you know, I'm talking around something a lot, so I'm going to, at this point, just during discussion, I'm going to stay with my motion. And it's on the floor right now, just to respond a little bit.
Because, yeah, recreation, as one person was telling me this morning, my concern is, let's say, an eighty-nine-year-old with more of his groceries or something. See, the way the grandson can grow, but we have a lot of people here without family, so I'm trying to catch that.
I will just make this observation that there's a difference in potency and quality when you don't know what you're doing. I saw you nodding your head quite violently, or agreement, about the dangers of growing in your house as opposed to doing it in a facility that knows what they're doing.
Further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair will retire.
You don't call for another vote?
I did hear a few voted, or...
No, I did not.
You did not?
I did ask for a mayor.
Those opposed?
Opposed, all who oppose, support the option to medical.
Motion carries, two to one. Any further discussion on that at this time, or any follow-up you'd like to say or anything? Good, all right.
So with that, with that, if we get a sense from the overall population, I'm talking about from Dupont Creek or Park, we can always revisit the medical marijuana. Or after the vote in November. No, 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 if we opt-out now, there's no vote. But we can always revisit for an option.
We could put it to the vote of the people for an option to allow medical dispensaries after the vote. Am I correct on that?
That is correct. Whichever way you go.
The only, Mr. Bailey, you've explained it several times, but my understanding is, if we opted out and didn't put it to a vote of the people, then the board itself could reopen that ordinance and consider changing it. But we put it to a vote of the people, the only way we can change it is by voting.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's if they've approved the ordinance. If they voted against the ordinance, then you can't come back to revisit it.
So only two goes to a vote?
Correct. That's correct.
Well, if we can come back in and change it, that opt-out, that doesn't go to a vote?
Correct.
Yeah.
The thing that you can't, you have to have an ordinance in place before December 27th, or else you lose all your options. So when you ask, could we come back and revisit it, it will depend on when you start the ordinance process. Right now, you have one ordinance that's moving through the process. If you don't act by December 4th to have another ordinance in place that pops out and whatever, then you won't have chances for the only thing that will be out there for you to make a decision on.
For Arkansas therapy. If we go with what motion is to opt-out, and then come March, and then come March, we say, well, we might want to revisit medical or in July, medical dispensary permission allowance, would we pass another ordinance?
No, no. This one refers to the general election, so that, that's moving forward. So, yeah, but if you as a board opted out, then you could come back wherever you wanted to and amend to allow whatever you like out of the six. Got it?
Yeah. I dropped off the part of the motion.
Did you hear all of that, Jim?
Yeah, I got it down.
If it, yes, if your proposed ordinance was approved, then you could come back with an amendment that would have to be voted on by the general public. If they voted against your proposed ordinance, then Mr. 91 would control and he would not come back to revisit the issue. As usual, the answers don't seem to provide much clarity. It's a complicated issue. It's hard to articulate.
So, Mr. Bailey, same question somewhat. We talked about this before. You've described it, but just for clarification, if we opt out under Measure 91 except for permitting medical marijuana sales and we further refer it to a vote of the people, what we opted out on, is it or is it not true that regardless of the outcome of the vote in order of 2016, medical marijuana sales would not be affected? They would continue on because the folks would not be voting on that?
That's correct. You would either have a situation of only medical marijuana sales or you would have medical marijuana sales and everything else.
I lose the vote.
Well, one other question. I know we're talking about what, what ordinances, if any, we're going to move forward to a hearing process. But it has to be, if we move anything, it has to be only one ordinance to consider for a hearing?
That's correct. Right. You can't, these ordinances conflict. You would create conflicting legal regimes if you pass both of them to ordinances, so you can't do that.
Well, not pass, but to move forward to the hearing process for consideration of passing.
Oh, no, you could do that. You could, you could still put forward both, or any number of ordinances just to go forward until the next meeting. But then you could, you could only pick one of them.
Right.
Yeah, so you could do that. You could, through a motion and a majority vote, then you could say, oh, let's start the process for both ordinances or three ordinances.
Okay.
Thank you.
But by the end of that process, you could only decide one, yeah.
So, we have a hearing on two?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah. Or three.
I believe I'm an attitude confusion myself.
So, with that said...
But it allows options.
It does allow options. And so, I'm going to make a motion to accept the draft ordinance and push it forward to the hearing process by the timelines in the matter of an ordinance opting out of Measure 91 and referring the matter to the general election.
I will second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion?
I'm still very supportive of public medical things, so you might catch my thoughts.
I guess. Any clarification on what that last part was?
I'm leaning toward opting out permitting and permitting marijuana. The motion on the table, yes?
The motion on the table is, just have a little bit of discussion. Now, wait, I had some discussion with, I apologize, Mr. Southern, Jim.
There's confusion.
No problem. OLCC rules and guidelines are coming down upon the medical side and they're going to be what the rules are.
Not on the medical, not on the medical. That's, oh, wait, oh, wait.
Oh, OHA. Yes, I stand corrected. I, I'm a little bit confused on how hard it is for people that need the medical site of it to get it. Whenever it's legal to have four plants in a household, anybody 21 years or older, there's a lot of people out there growing. I don't have a full pulse on the need in Lake County to have the medical dispensaries because there is quite a few people that do grow. As Jim told me, up to eight, it's been knocked down to eight that they can grow for, for people in medical use. So, Mr. Kessler, I'm talking around it just because of, I do believe that there's people out there that need the medical site of it.
But then...
I sort of believe that there's a lot of options for them to acquire that legally right now. So, you know, I'm talking around to some of it, so I'm going to, at this point, just during discussion, I'm going to stay with my motion and it's on the floor right now. Just to respond a little bit. Pretty good future.
Yeah, recreation, as one person was telling me this morning, my concern is, let's say, an 89 year old with more of his groceries or something. See, the way the grand center can grow, but we have a lot of people here without family. So, I'm trying to catch that, yeah.
I will just make this observation that there's a difference in potency and quality when you don't know what you're doing. I saw you nodding your head quite violently or agreement about the dangers of growing in your house as opposed to doing it in a facility that knows what they're doing.
Further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair will retire.
You don't call for another vote?
I did hear a few voted or...
No, I did not.
You did not?
Yeah, I asked for a name.
Those opposed?
Opposed. Only because I support the option, which is medical.
Motion carries two to one. Any further discussion on that at this time or any follow-up you'd like to say or anything? Good. All right.
So, with that, with that, if we get a sense from the overall population, I'm talking about from Dupont Creek to Fort Rock, we can always revisit medical marijuana. Or after the vote in the... No, no. No, no. If we opt out now, there's no vote.
Correct.
But we can always revisit for an option.
We could put it to a vote of the people for an option to allow medical dispensaries after the vote. Am I correct on that?
That is correct. Whichever way you go.
The only, Mr. Bailey, you've explained it several times, but my understanding is if we opted out and didn't put it to a vote of the people and the board itself could reopen that ordinance and consider changing it. But we put it to a vote of the people. The only way we can change it is by voting.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's if they've approved the ordinance. If they voted against the ordinance, then you can't come back to it.
Right.
So, only two goes to the vote. If we just opt out, that doesn't go to a vote of the people.
That's correct.
Well, if we can come back in and change it, that opt out to allow one to...
Whatever you want, yeah.
It's always that option, so comfortably that makes sense.
The thing that you can't, you have to have an ordinance in place before December 27th or else you lose all your options. So, when you ask, could we come back and revisit it? It will depend on when you start the ordinance process. Right now, you have one ordinance that's moving through the process. If you don't act by December 4th to have another ordinance in place that pops out and whatever, then you won't have chances. It's the only thing that will be out there for you to make a decision on.
For Arkansas therapy. If we go with what motion is to opt out and then come March, we say, well, we might want to revisit medical or in July, medical dispensary permission allowance. Would we pass another ordinance?
No. No. This one refers to the general election. So, that, that's moving forward.
Okay, got you.
So, yeah, but if you as a board opted out, then you could come back wherever you wanted to and amend to allow whatever you like out of the six categories.
Yeah. I dropped off the part of the motion.
Did you hear all of that now, maybe?
Yeah, I got it down this way.
That's exactly why I asked the question about if we had more than one ordinance to move into the hearing process.
In the hearing process, it's okay, but you must pick one by the end of your ordinance decision.
Make a decision on one.
So, I believe we're all clear now. As clear as Arkansas talk can come. So, now we, I want to talk about the timeframes and the ordinance hearings. We're 13 days after today. As soon as we can have a hearing, our next meeting will be December 2nd.
Can I ask one thing just to clarify?
Absolutely.
And that is, are there any other motions regarding the proposed ordinances for consideration? Because you made your motion and just since there are others, it could also go to the process.
Very good point of order. And as chair, I should have asked that. Is there any other motions to come forward?
Yeah, I'll put my motion up that we go with the ordinance opting out of Measure 91, but permitting medical marijuana.
Motion's been made. Do I hear a second? No second. Motion is for lack of a second. And do I hear any other motions?
Yeah, I'll jump in with mine in the matter of the ordinance opting out of Measure 91, period.
Motion's been made to opt out without referring it to the vote of the people. Am I correct on that?
You're correct.
I hear no second. Motion is for lack of a second. At this point, all three. No, that's, that's the fourth option that you just... We didn't have an ordinance that said that. That's just...
No, that was, that's an order.
That's an order.
Okay.
Yeah. With that, any other motions to come forward? You're being, thank you for the point of order and I'm sorry, Board, that I didn't pass that. And I do want to follow the process very much. So, now we are to the process. 13 days is as soon as we can have a hearing from today on the proposed ordinance, just for clarification, it's a proposed ordinance until we adopt it. If we adopt it after hearing process, then I would refer it to... With that, our next meeting that this is slated for would be in Paisley, correct?
That's correct.
That would be our regular board meeting. I do believe in for discussion, an evening meeting either on the work session or continue that meeting from Paisley back to Lakeview. I know that there is people that voiced opinion to me that they work all day long and cannot make a meeting. This is for discussion for us to make a decision if we would like to consider having a 6 o'clock, 6:30 or butter time evening meeting during the hearing process. We could do, Foxford did have one on Tuesday, have a legal counsel call in on a work session or else we could have one in Paisley and continue that meeting and that hearing to Lakeview that evening, which would be Wednesday, the second, I believe.
That's correct.
So, what are your best thoughts?
In whatever fashion, I'm supportive of having a regular meetings and with specifically for evening.
Commissioner Kessler, I mean, you know?
Yeah, I'm fine with that as well. I'm a little confused over dates. I thought we, it was the second meeting in December that we had in Paisley.
I'm only going with what I could've told. So, I've made two suggestions or recommendations would be either, I would, I would like for legal counsel to be there during those hearing processes. So, the option, I guess, would be to ask him, would you like to come on Tuesday evening? Or would you like to travel from Paisley down to Lakeview and have an evening meeting and be present?
I can attend either one by telephone.
I don't think that was an option.
Well, you said present. I mean, virtually, you'd be present.
That's correct. I'll be at the actual meeting in Paisley. I'll be regular meeting.
But we continue to Lakeview?
Yes.
That would be a regular...
Yeah, if we understand the proposal, I'll, I'll have to take an advisory when I get back. No, quite seriously, if you're willing to be there, then I'll, I'll do that.
You know, a lot of it can...
But I would prefer it to be the night before rather than on Wednesday.
Have an evening informational meeting here on Tuesday.
Yeah.
If you think that would be right.
And then continue the hearing to Wednesday in Paisley.
Yeah, that's my approach.
What we could do on Tuesday is have a regular nine o'clock work session and then recess until evening for this specific topic.
I think that'd be very appropriate. That's the way I think would be the most productive for the public to be able to interact with this.
And then hold the hearing open again until Tuesday in Paisley.
Okay.
You want to, you want a evening in Tuesday? There's people out there that work also.
Good thought. I haven't, I was, I was honestly only looking at one evening meeting. And I, I respect where you're going.
We keep saying that this is a citizen's very high interest. And Paisley is not yet all the way up in the county, but we have all those residents from Fort Rock all the way down to Paisley.
Yeah.
I can do two, you can...
I can too.
You can too?
Only if we have it in Paisley for you.
You're at Dan's house.
In the backyard.
All right, so, so we get this advertised correctly. That's the reason why I'm having this discussion. It's six o'clock evening meeting, I believe with the daylight savings.
Any doctor?
Time and everything. I think six is a good time.
It's dark 30 at that time, so at least the ranchers and farmers should have the policy at that hour.
Yeah. Okay, so, under the advertising, we will have our hearings. Six o'clock will be the hearing in the Lakeview area on Tuesday, the first. And then Paisley, six o'clock, continuation of the hearing in Paisley, six o'clock on the second.
We can actually open the hearing on Tuesday and a regular work session.
I said continuation.
Yeah, continuation into the evening, continuation into the Paisley regular meeting, continuation into Paisley evening.
Legal counsel may not be able to be there Tuesday morning before you have to open the hearing.
They don't open the hearing Tuesday evening.
Okay, okay.
I was saying something else.
Oh, was you?
Oh.
Was I not listening to you?
Well, not that Jim needs to be there. The thing is, we're having an evening meeting for those who were, some people don't go.
So, you've...
Better suit up.
I'm listening.
I'm just opening as wide as possible. If we open a hearing during a Tuesday work session, Jim may not need to be there. If there's some tough questions, we can always carry over.
Well, you know...
Carry over into the Tuesday evening and then...
Well, maybe, maybe we need to think that out because the hearing process is to take testimony. But if we don't engage with the debate at that time, we take in the testimony. So, if Mr. Bailey was available by phone...
In the morning.
And your recommendation to have a, start the hearing during a regular session. Until you're on to the sixth.
And then next time.
And I take, and actually take testimony and not debate it. So, I, that's the reason why I'm having, I'm comfortable with that. Are you guys comfortable?
Yeah, if they're older than that, just take that wire.
So, we're going to get four opportunities for public comment. Do you want that at nine o'clock on Tuesday? Do you want the first thing after that or?
Mine, um...
On Tuesday morning?
I would say, no. Take yours, close your hearing. Oh.
Okay, so, we will open the hearing. Let's plan on, let's tackle that right off on Tuesday.
Perfect.
And put a timeframe. And if we go over the timeframe, we'll try to keep it within a, let's say, half hour for testimony. We might have to stretch that out. Think they'll adjust it. So, don't, put a timed item right at 9:30.
Right.
We'll try to stay to the three minute timeframe, timeframe. Hopefully, we'll have a timer. Continue it to that evening. That's the second one. And then continue to the evening in Paisley. Are we going to do, give two opportunities in Paisley also? So, that's four. We have plenty of time in Paisley, plenty in Lakeview.
So, this is what I have penciled for Tuesday at nine o'clock, six o'clock, both in Lakeview. And on Wednesday, 10:10 in Paisley and six o'clock in Paisley.
Great.
It's all one hearing. Correct?
So, with that, with that thought, I would like to think about adjusting Paisley meeting because we'll travel up there to an afternoon meeting instead of 10 o'clock meeting. Because if our agenda isn't very heavy, we might be done by around noon. We have six hours before the meeting period, so I would like to think that maybe we start our meeting two or three in the afternoon in Paisley. I'd like to just throw that out there as a...
That's a good thought.
You look confused, Mr. Bailey?
No, I, I think that people in Paisley and in the remainder of the county will appreciate the evening. We may get some folks that are a little early, but I think the same goes for... I'm just thinking of all of you. I think if we have our regular board meeting, so it wasn't such a downtime for a hearing from out of town, you would find, you would capture all those things. I, that's just...
For what time do you think Paisley meeting should, what suggestion or thought?
Two o'clock?
Two, three?
Three o'clock?
Three o'clock. So, there you go. You just adjusted to that. Is there anything we're missing on the process, Mr. Bailey?
No, you completely, oh, we will need to read this in its entirety this meeting.
Yes, that's, that's my next point of order. Timeframes, we're good?
In terms of timeframes and the number of sessions you have on it, you're totally covered.
All right, so then, the legal counsel just pointed out what part of the process is for the proposed ordinance to be read in its entirety. Now, I've already arranged and asked if the part of legal counsel would please read that for record.
And, Mr. Chair, are we at a point, Mr. Bailey, where we can assign a number to reference this to? Or do you want to tell, we got through the hearing process and see what happens?
You don't need to do it today. If you know what the number would be, we could put that in here. But since it's not going to be an ordinance until it's adopted.
Yeah.
And the only reason that we're reading this, which we don't normally do, is because of the short timeframe. Normally, we could just refer to it by title, but due to the short timeframe, we have to read it in its entirety. So, with that...
Would you please read it?
Before the Board of Commissioners and the county of Lake and the state of Oregon in the matter of an ordinance opting out of Measure 91 or referring the matter to general, to general election. And then that would be applied for the ordinance numbered up. Whereas Oregon law for Measure 91, which legalized the use of marijuana, allows the county to opt out of some or all aspects of marijuana production and sales. Whereas this matter is of considerable interest to the people of Lake County and over 55% of the county vote against approval of Measure 91. Whereas Oregon law provides that a county may adopt ordinances that prohibit the establishment of any one or more of the six categories of state licensed or registered marijuana businesses in the areas subject to the jurisdiction of the county, subject to a requirement that the ordinance be referred to the electors of the county at the next general election. And whereas the Board of Commissioners desires to refer the question of whether to allow the operation of medical marijuana processing sites, medical marijuana dispensaries, retail marijuana producers, retail marijuana processors, retail marijuana wholesalers, and/or retail marijuana retailers to the voters of Lake County. Therefore, the Lake County Board of Commissioners hereby ordains as follows. Number one, in accordance with Oregon law, following or prohibited within Lake County, A, marijuana processing sites registered under Oregon law. B, medical marijuana dispensaries registered under Oregon law. C, marijuana producers licensed under Oregon law. D, marijuana processors licensed under Oregon law. E, marijuana wholesalers licensed under Oregon law. F, marijuana retailers licensed under Oregon law. Number two, this ordinance shall be referred to the electors of Lake County at the next general election, specifically in November 2016. Number three, the text of this ordinance shall be provided, A, to the Oregon Health Authority in the form and manner prescribed by the authority, and B, to the Oregon Medical Control Commission in the form and manner prescribed by the commission, enacted and ordained by the Lake County Board of Commissioners on this blank day of blank 2015 by County Board of Commissioners, Bradley Minner's chair, Dan Chau, member, Ken Kessler, member.
Thank you.
One single breath.
I do have a note to the city of Paisley just to confirm that the community center is available for those times, so...
Okay, and so, this has to be publicized in the paper?
As soon as I hear back from them to confirm that, I will. I'll send you that advertisement for review, I agree.
Just a general comment, as we sit here as boards of commissioners with the tough decisions and everything, it's pretty obvious whenever there's three different motions, three different people, that it's unique. This is one of the most unique things I've worked on as a commissioner over the years. And I think that sort of makes a statement right there of the Board of Commissioners, how unique this is to deal with. And that's, I just want everybody to know that we don't take this lightly. It's a tough decision. Thank you, Board, for working on this. And Mr. Bailey and everybody else that came.
I will, I will add to that, that I've not gotten nearly any questions, but anything else that's come before.
All right, so, we are going to move on with our agenda. The last thing that we left off that we have not taken care of is the, let me see, Department Heads, it's here, it's waiting to get things done. Let's make the jump down to those. Darwin, are you here for anything on the agenda? He's here for the thing. We have Mr. Berman here. We need to take care of the additions, American Tower lease agreement. Mr. Berman, thank you for your patience. Jim, thank you.
Thank you, y'all.
All right. American Tower lease, back commitment to this lease agreement.
You guys asked me yesterday to do some research. I got a memo out from my facility group. I have not received nothing back on that yet for the information that you were looking for from me to go research. I'm still waiting, so...
Dave and I had some discussion on this this morning. Quite interesting to look at this and forty years concerns me a little bit with the technology and everything that happens. In five years, we may be all digital items, maybe not having these for the towers. So, one aspect is, yeah, we'll lock them in for forty years. We got, we got paid for forty years. There is some ways to get out of it. The other side of it is, is to lock the county in without any options for forty years worries me a little bit. For the same reason, technology changes. Maybe they are able to enhance what they have for forty years and create a much bigger revenue stream for them and we did none of the benefits of what they're able to enhance their business. But so, I, I guess, with that said, just sort of discussion. And where Dave is asking for some input from other places, that lease, that I don't think that we have to act on this today. I don't think it would, I think we could wait for some more information.
Well, Dave and I also talked about it yesterday a little bit, but last night, thinking about it, it was just rolling through my mind, forty years, $15,000 in our monthly payments. So, two things occurred to me is, one, you know, that apparently what was, what was actually offered to us as opposed to us doing the proverbial counter offer. If we thought forty years or even twenty years was not an unreasonable time for certainly for the investments they might make, perhaps we come back with a different lease request. And then the second part of it was that the 20% bump after five years, for every five years during the course of the lease. I prefer in the world of... five years during the course of the lease, I prefer in the world of, of compound interest to go with perhaps eighty-four percent a year from year one. And that way at the end of five years, it's more than twenty percent in value, so.
Okay, let's, let's continue this on. The Board continued on for more information.
Okay.
All right, because we have a current lease with them now.
Yes, they switched owners. Switched, switched to American Tower, used to be rising, now American, American Tower taking over. James.
So maybe before we go to, I just want to ask Mr. Bailey, I'm sure you took a look at this, right?
Yeah.
Is it common for municipalities, companies to go into such a long-term lease on something like this?
I think it's very uncommon. The point that Commissioner Miller said has a lot of merit to it, and that is, this is an area of technology that within five years, you could easily see it's totally different. So, yeah.
It's anticipated to be totally different.
Yeah, it's not like a pipeline. Pipeline with fluid, that's one thing, but this is totally different.
Okay, we'll continue that on. The, the second part you have Crane Mountain LLC commercial lease. This is, you explained yesterday of the business that had the lease with us, the business was sold, and so the lease needs to be moved over to the new business name.
Crane, Crane Mountain LLC.
LLC. And with that, you've explained to them that, that it does not start a new monthly reduction that they pick up the lease that have to rate it is now because it is just a change of ownership, but it's still the same business.
Yes, they're not, they're, they're not the one that established and started the business to, to the effect that their, their lease, though, you know, when they start their own business, you know, we're here to help them. Well, this has already been an established business, so I started out with a rent to Jaxer Better.
Yeah, it's continuation of an agreement with a different name on it. The, the purpose of incubator building is a progressive rent for businesses to totally get started and move out and build and become part of our community as far as taxation and building and everything. And so this just continues on, probably start with Jaxer Better. And I appreciate you making sure under base rent that it refers to that. You know, Mr. Bailey, you seen the.
No, this is so pro forma.
So entertain a motion.
I would make a motion. We approve the change in both the existing lease from Jaxer Better to coming out with the policy, just the new tenant picking on the same terms, the same lease that exists with Jaxer Better.
Second motion, motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
On the second period, just on the corrections, please the chair of courses, I'll just cross out the chair.
All right, thank you very much, Dave. Appreciate you working on that.
Thanks, Dave.
And so we should be able to move right back up to get on our, our agenda here, college advisory board recommendations. We have that. This is for, for college advisory board recommendations. Denise gave us an overview yesterday. The recommendations are because people either moved or they've met the end of their term. And so Denise, while I'm signing this, would you like to say what the recommendations are and make a difference in motion?
Recommendation is to appoint Superintendent Walt Cahill. His term would expire on June thirty of eighteen. Steve Brown from Warner Creek, his term would be ending on six-thirty of seventeen. Bob Nash, E S D, he as well, June thirty, seventeen. Christine Twight, expired twelve-thirty-one, seventeen. Larnie Chavez, she was originally on board. She needs to re-up. Her expiration date would be June thirty, seventeen. And Emma Cornell as well, new term date of six-thirty, eighteen.
I'd make a motion that we approve the college advisory board recommendation as read by our administrator.
Second. Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Denise, you will do the appropriate letters or whatever.
I will.
And also with the ones that are no longer there, if we had a letter thanking them for their service probably would be good. Next item, Mr. Bailey, social media policy recommendation. Yesterday I tried to not have a discussion on this and we did have a discussion, so we didn't go in too far, but if you'd like to give an overview of this, yesterday we did give an overview somewhat, but I want to make sure that you gave that official.
Okay. This is sort of a continuation of our computer policy and our computer use policy. It addresses an area that's been of increasing concerns to municipalities and counties, and that is what employees do off work involving social media that could reflect on the county. So this is an effort to address that without infringing on individuals' First Amendment rights of free speech, but to also prevent any confusion that the individual speaking is speaking for themselves and not as an official spokesperson for the county. It also addresses the use of social media when or during work hours and makes clear what's not permitted in that regard.
Okay, and when we, we set our policies, at that time, we said there are a few times of the data and I think that it's a, it's a working document, it's a part of the working document, and this is especially as technology continues to change and availability and how easy it is to integrate all the, we may be setting even more policies in the future.
Yes, if you'd asked me a year ago, would we need any of these things that we've since enacted, I probably said, I don't think so. But things are moving very quickly, so we're going to probably eventually have a pretty thick book with explaining everything that can and can't be done.
So we need to accept this by motion?
Yes, motion to accept the social media policy.
And this is an amendment, this is an addition?
It's an addition to our existing policy.
Okay. Second. Motion's been made and seconded to, to addition of social media policy to our IT policies as we have. I think that's correct, really called IT policy.
Correct.
Okay. Close enough.
Close enough.
Read it. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Effective as of now, correct?
Correct.
All right. Next item, ordinance number one-eleven, donations surplus property of Mr. Bailey. On this one here, it's pretty easy to understand by reading it. Does, does this take the hearing process or do we just act upon this?
No, this is a, for a hearing process. This addresses the situation that from time to time, the board has requested to take action with regard to donations, and the board has to make that decision on an ad hoc basis. This formalizes the process so that future boards can simply look to the value of the property involved and make a decision pursuant to the ordinance. It eliminates anybody questioning whether or not you have the right to make that decision to donate, which you do, but it makes it very clear for the year, but.
So by motion and second, I hope we can enact this.
No, you ran forward.
The hearing.
The hearing. I probably didn't hear that part of the meeting.
He didn't speak on his mic clearly enough.
All right, so would entertain a motion to push ordinance number one-eleven through the hearing process.
So second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the draft ordinance for a hearing process and not a donation surplus of county property. Further discussion?
I've already signed.
All in favor say aye. Motion carries. It's been a unique day for you, too.
And this should be put on the agenda for, except for second in Paisley.
That's not the. That'll do. Okay. So our next item is meeting minutes, and we have two sets of those. We have October sixth and October seventh. And I'm looking to see here, Lake, Mr. Shum was absent on.
Both.
Both. The stateside, I didn't mention, I guess. I'll make a motion to accept minutes of October sixth and seventh, test presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. We have no department updates that I'm aware of today. Legal updates and.
I'm all legal now.
You're all legal now. Okay, executive session. Do you have anything?
Yeah.
I would, I would like to go on executive session once again under land acquisition, Other legal counsel refers that as?
Subsection E, real property transactions.
Subsection E. So we'll go into that at twelve-twenty-one. Those remaining will be the board, legal counsel, the president's welcome to stay with his gag, Josh is kicked out, Denise can stay.